All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the February 6, 2023 Carras Till City Council meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
President.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Boucher.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
And, uh, Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Zepidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kuvall.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the City Council meeting held on January...
Mayor, I think you have to vote to allow Alderman Jefferson to participate remotely.
For the record, Alderman Jefferson is remote tonight due to a recent health emergency. So he will be joining us this evening remotely if it is allowed by City Council. So I would ask for a motion to allow Alderman Jefferson to participate tonight remotely.
I'll make a motion.
We have motion by Alderman Zepidi, seconded by Alderman Gazal. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kuvall. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the City Council meeting held on January 16, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting held on January 16, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You have before you the minutes of the work session held on January 23, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on January 23, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
abstained.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you have before you the minutes of the work session held on January 30, 2023. Motion would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on January 30, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, but I would ask for council's concurrence that if we deviate to the executive session, which is listed as number 24 on the agenda items. We do have our Labor attorney, John Kelly, with us this evening, so I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for collective bargaining to C2.
So move, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for executive session for collective bargaining to C2. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Zepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuvall. Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mayor, could I have a time, please?
Uh, we'll be going into executive session at 7:07 PM.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to resume regular session.
So, this is presented.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazzal, to resume regular session at 7:46 PM. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Bache.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Marcus Pidi.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
There is not.
Okay, will we resume with our regular agenda as posted? We will go to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I do not have any agenda items, but happy to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions of our city attorney? Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor Council. At the last work session, we talked about an agreement with Richland School District for declaring surplus in the proposed Weber Division TIF district. We've been in the process of creating that TIF district for quite a while now. Last week, we had a, or on January 19th, rather, we had a joint review board meeting. At that meeting, there was discussion about having an intergovernmental agreement where the city would agree to declare surplus from the TIF every year, starting in year eight. And in years eight, nine, and 10, we would declare 10% surplus. And then from years 11 to 23, we would declare 15% surplus. Richland School District Superintendent spoke about those terms with his school board. They were agreeable to that. So tonight before you, you have a resolution that would approve that intergovernmental agreement. I had passed out to you an example of what that surplus distribution would look like. So if you want to take a look at that, as an example, if in year eight, we declare 10% surplus out of that TIF, and that amount is $100,000, then this shows you the percentage breakdown each of the taxing districts would get. So from that $100,000, School District 88, their percent of the tax bill is 35.88%, so they would get $35,881. Crest Hill is 6.43%, we would get $6,432. And Lockport Township Roads would get a whopping $673. So that's just an example of how this would work. We would declare surplus in each year, starting in year eight. We would send that amount of money to the county, and then the county would distribute it to the taxing districts based on their proportion to share the tax bill, such as in the example I gave you. So if, I'm sorry, so if the city council is agreeable to this and approves it tonight, then the school board is scheduled to approve it on February 15th. We do have a continuation of the January 19th joint review board meeting scheduled for tomorrow, where the joint review board would then take a vote as to whether or not to recommend creation of this TIF district.
So Muf has presented, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazzal, for an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Richland School District 88A with respect to declaration of surplus funds in the proposed Weber Division Tax Increment Finance District. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Jim and his predecessor, Steve Golden, on working with the school district, having an open dialogue to get on the same page. Just really appreciate all your hard work with this. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Bache.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Marcus Pidi.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
There is not.
Okay, will we resume with our regular agenda as posted? We will go to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I do not have any agenda items, but happy to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions of our city attorney? Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor Council. At the last work session, we talked about an agreement with Richland School District for declaring surplus in the proposed Weber Division TIF district. We've been in the process of creating that TIF district for quite a while now. Last week, we had a, or on January 19th, rather, we had a joint review board meeting. At that meeting, there was discussion about having an intergovernmental agreement where the city would agree to declare surplus from the TIF every year, starting in year eight. And in years eight, nine, and 10, we would declare 10% surplus. And then from years 11 to 23, we would declare 15% surplus. Richland School District Superintendent spoke about those terms with his school board. They were agreeable to that. So tonight before you, you have a resolution that would approve that intergovernmental agreement. I had passed out to you an example of what that surplus distribution would look like. So if you want to take a look at that, as an example, if in year eight, we declare 10% surplus out of that TIF, and that amount is $100,000, then this shows you the percentage breakdown each of the taxing districts would get. So from that $100,000, School District 88, their percent of the tax bill is 35.88%, so they would get $35,881. Crest Hill is 6.43%, we would get $6,432. And Lockport Township Roads would get a whopping $673. So that's just an example of how this would work. We would declare surplus in each year, starting in year eight. We would send that amount of money to the county, and then the county would distribute it to the taxing districts based on their proportion to share the tax bill, such as in the example I gave you. So if, I'm sorry, so if the city council is agreeable to this and approves it tonight, then the school board is scheduled to approve it on February 15th. We do have a continuation of the January 19th joint review board meeting scheduled for tomorrow, where the joint review board would then take a vote as to whether or not to recommend creation of this TIF district.
So Muf has presented, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazzal, for an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Richland School District 88A with respect to declaration of surplus funds in the proposed Weber Division Tax Increment Finance District. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Jim and his predecessor, Steve Golden, on working with the school district, having an open dialogue to get on the same page. Just really appreciate all your hard work with this. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Bache.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Pidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1163.
That's what I have.
53 or 63?
63. 1163.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions of our city administrator?
I have, as I mentioned to you earlier today, I would like to, for you to look into a new contract for the IT. I feel that IIS is charging us way too much money for their services. It was brought to my attention, there was a couple outages last week, and we're paying extra money for the outage, which they haven't serviced that part as well. So right now, we're paying $50,000 a month, plus $2,020 for data services. That comes to a total of $17,202 a month. So we are paying $6,820 more a month, and we used to pay Vertec $10,200 for probably a better service. And I know we have discussed before that we're gonna do something about it when we move to City Hall, but according to what's happening right now, I don't think we're gonna be moving anytime soon, either April or May. I'm hoping we will, but we don't have a crystal ball at this point to figure out where we're gonna be ready.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to resume regular session.
So moved, just presented.
Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Boucher, to resume regular session at 7:46 PM. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Mike, is there any action needed to be taken coming out of executive session?
There is not.
Okay, will we resume with our regular agenda as posted? We will go to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I do not have any agenda items, but happy to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions of our city attorney? Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor Council. At the last work session, we talked about an agreement with Richland School District for declaring surplus in the proposed Weber Division Tiff District. We've been in the process of creating that Tiff District for quite a while now. Last week, we had a, or on January 19th, rather, we had a joint review board meeting. At that meeting, there was discussion about having an intergovernmental agreement where the city would agree to declare surplus from the Tiff every year, starting in year eight. And in years eight, nine, and 10, we would declare 10% surplus. And then from years 11 to 23, we would declare 15% surplus. Richland School District Superintendent spoke about those terms with his school board. They were agreeable to that. So tonight before you, you have a resolution that would approve that intergovernmental agreement. I had passed out to you an example of what that surplus distribution would look like. So if you want to take a look at that, as an example, if in year eight, we declare 10% surplus out of that Tiff, and that amount is $100,000, then this shows you the percentage breakdown each of the taxing districts would get. So from that $100,000, School District 88, their percent of the tax bill is 35.88%, so they would get $35,881. Crest Hill is 6.43%, we would get $6,432. And Lockport Township Roads would get a whopping $673. So that's just an example of how this would work. We would declare surplus in each year, starting in year eight. We would send that amount of money to the county, and then the county would distribute it to the taxing districts based on their proportion to share the tax bill, such as in the example I gave you. So if, I'm sorry, so if the city council is agreeable to this and approves it tonight, then the school board is scheduled to approve it on February 15th. We do have continuation of the January 19th joint review board meeting scheduled for tomorrow, where the joint review board would then take a vote as to whether or not to recommend creation of this Tiff District.
So moved, as presented, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Crest Hill and the Richland School District 88A with respect to declaration of surplus funds in the proposed Weber Division Tax Increment Finance District. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Jim and his predecessor, Steve Golden, on working with the school district, having an open dialogue to get on the same page. Just really appreciate all your hard work with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1163.
That's like 53 or 63?
Six-three. 1163.
Okay, any questions of our city administrator?
I have, as I mentioned to you earlier today, I would like to, for you to look into a new contract for the IT. I feel that IIS is charging us way too much money for their services. It was brought to my attention, there was a couple outages last week, and we're paying extra money for the outage, which they haven't serviced that part as well. So right now, we're paying $50,000 a month, plus $2,020 for data services. That comes to a total of $17,202 a month. So we are paying $6,820 more a month, and we used to pay Vertec $10,200 for probably a better service. And I know we have discussed before that, that we're gonna do something about it when we move to City Hall, but according to what's happening right now, I don't think we're gonna be moving anytime soon, either April or May. I'm hoping we will, but we don't have a crystal ball at this point to figure out where we're gonna be ready. So my understanding, the last time, we looked into three, I think, three different IT companies, and maybe it's time to reach out to those companies, or maybe we need to try again Vertec and see if they will consider, you know, doing that. That will be a big saving for us at this point with the better service.
I could certainly do that. Is that what's the council's pleasure? I was wondering if there's any input from staff that works with these people every day. I don't work with them.
Well, those comments, like, they came from staff, too, that they're not comfortable with what's happening. I mean, there's a lot of people got outages last week. What is the point of having to pay all that money and you're not getting the service? And not only that, as a vendor, a vendor should not be making negative comment about council. You know, a vendor that's very unprofessional for a vendor to make comment, to say to council, because they watch the meeting. That's not for them. We didn't hire them to make an opinion or comment about how we do business in here. You are a vendor to service the IT department. They're not, we're not paying all this money for them to make comments about how we feel. And this is nothing personal. I think I've stated my, how I felt from the beginning. I don't think we should be paying all that money. So that's where I stand.
Just to clarify, there wasn't network outages. So when you say outages, there were some employees that may have had fluctuation in their connection, but that was limited, and that was corrected. So there, it's not that there were network outages where the entire network was down. That has not occurred.
But again, we did stated that we're gonna do something about it before we move to the new municipal building. And where things are going right now, I think we need to be more proactive. And I understand you're overwhelmed with stuff on the agenda, but since we already, you know, interviewed the other IT companies, I think this is a time, maybe we need to take another look. And for the same service, or better service, we're probably gonna get a lot, we're gonna pay a lot less. So... So we only have two people that they wanna do this? And me, three?
I thought they also, I was pointing to the third person.
Oh, I'm sorry. They both said yes.
But he didn't say anything.
Oh, Darrell, did you? I keep forgetting the names. Darrell?
Yes.
Are you okay with us looking for a new IT company?
Uh, I mean, if it's gonna save the city some money, I'm, I'm all in favor of saving money.
I'm, I'm in favor of saving money. And I, I mean, we had, we had issues with that last company, too. So Claudia, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there was an issue with that last company, and something they did that was very, very unprofessional, unscrupulous, that I was told about. And their supervisor was actually called on that. And the city clerk literally went there herself.
Well, according to staff, they were happy, they're happier with Vertec than with this company.
So I don't know what the deal is with these people, that they feel like they can intercede in our affairs here, but they're here for a service, and they're not here for opinions, or gains, or anything else. So I just wanna be leery of Vertec because of the issue we had prior, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks, Jim. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifer.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The first agenda item I have you, in front of me this evening, is, as we spoke about, it's a work session on January 30th. We need to, after the IDNR saw our first allocation application, we have a few amendments need to be made, such as looking at the viability of this Plains River, rivering options with other communities. Obviously, we talked about some public awareness last time, and a deeper dive into the water loss. So we would need to make an amendment to the Contract with Strand and Associates for Lake Michigan Water Allocation Application Contract. This would be an additional $65,000 amendment that would be split over this fiscal year and next fiscal year, but also will get us through the end of the allocation process.
So moved, just presented. Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for a recommendation to amend the contract with Strand and Associates for Lake Michigan Water Allocation Application with Amendment One. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next agenda item I have for your review is a contract with Strand and Associates for water model updates and calibration of the current model. As we spoke about at the work session, again, the current cal, the current model's over seven years old. We do have new mains in the ground. Some of our mains are getting older. So we'd like to do a water model update for a not-to-exceed contract of $32,100. This will be split over the next two fiscal years as well.
So, Mark, just for the record, for anybody watching at home, that they understand, this is all for our end goal of the switch over to the Chicago water, and these are all things that are quite necessary to be done in order to continue that process. So I just, I, so moved, just presented, but I, I want that on the record.
Absolutely, Alder Person Overland. It's, this is one of those, one step in a long journey we're gonna have getting Lake Michigan water to the City of Crest Hill.
Thank you. I made a motion.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti, to recommend approval. Contract with Strand and Associates for water model updates and calibration of the current model. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Continuing on the same path, I'm looking for a recommendation, enter an agreement with Strand for the loan application for the well 14 raw water main, as we spoke about last week. We are continuing on with well 14 to make it through to 2030. We are looking to get the water main paid through for a low-interest state revolving fund loan, similar to the one at the East Plant and the West Plant. This would be a not-to-exceed contract with Strand of $20,000 for the low-interest loan application.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke, to enter into agreement with Strand for the loan application for well 14 raw water main. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next agenda item in front of you is a two-parter. The first is a plan, a transition plan for when our wells that we currently are using are switching over to an emergency backup water supply when Lake Michigan water does get here. There will be a bit of construction that needs to take place in terms of removing some of the chemicals, and also removing iron filters. Additional piping will need to be put in place as well, so we can, we're gonna have to run these wells once a month to take samples like we normally do. So the other second part is a source water protection plan. This is an IEPA mandated that by July of this year, we have a source water protection plan. So if there was any chemical spill, if there was any release of anything within so many feet of any of our wells, there is an emergency action plan in place for decontamination and sampling and other items such as that. This would be a not-to-exceed contract with Strand for $77,900 for both of these items, the emergency well transition plan and the source water protection plan.
Second.
All in one? We can do it all in one?
It's one, it's one contract.
Okay.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert, to enter into an agreement with Strand and Associates for an emergency well transition plan and the source water protection plan. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next agenda item is pay request number six from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, with direction from council to send it to the IEPA for approval and dispersment for a total amount of $508,465.30. As we've done in the last five pay applications, this check will be cut. It will be held on to until we receive reimbursement from the IEPA, and then the check will be sent directly to Williams Brothers.
So moved, just presented. Second.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to approve pay request number six from Williams Brother Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and dispersment for the total amount of $508,465.30. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Overland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
As we spoke about at the last work session, in order to continue moving forward with our allocation and the process, the IDNR, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, has asked for us to pass a resolution to show the city's commitment in working towards Lake Michigan water, showing that we have had public involvement. The council's been made aware of many of the options, some of the funding strategies, some of the funding prohibitions, but also the fact that the IDNR can tighten restrictions at any point. We spoke at length about this, and what I'm looking for is approval of a resolution that city council is aware and does continue want, does want staff to continue moving towards a transition to Lake Michigan water in 2030 as part of the Grand Prairie Water Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alder Person Overland, to approve a resolution in support of the City of Crest Hill's Lake Michigan Water Allocation Application before the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, LMO-22-02. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1164.
The last agenda item I have for you this evening, we spoke on the, at the January 30th work session, in the budget for 2023, Public Works had a waste water lead operator and a project manager. We'd like to switch those two positions to two additional laborers as directed by council at the last work session.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal, to hire two public works, maintenance workers in lieu of the proposed positions in the budget. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Overland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That is all of the agenda items I have for you this evening. I do want to thank council for the, their attention during the last lengthy work session on Lake Michigan water, but this is a very important topic that we will be working on for the, for the next decade. But if that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, Mark, I just want to thank you for all your attention to detail on this, and your hard work, and the budget, all the budget items, Lisa, Glenn, I mean, I know this is a big project, and all of you that contribute, thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thanks, Mark. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items for approval on the agenda tonight. The first is, is three parts. First is award the contract to Swallow Construction Company for the Cheney and Center Water Main roadway rehabilitation project in the amount of $3,183,273.20. Second item will be approved construction engineering with V3 Companies in the amount of $189,053. And the third item would approve construction testing services with GeoCon Professional Services, the amount of $6,293. Per the memo, we went out for bid, and opened bids up on January 10th. We received six bids, as listed in the memo. The bids are actually relatively close for a project of this size, and the number of contractors that we did receive. They were reviewed. They are, everything is correct and in order. Do not feel by going out to bid, we get, get any cheaper prices. Probably, you know, we got a real good price on the project as it currently is. The project will be paid out of American Rescue Funds and out of the Water Fund will be covering this. And in my memo, you can see, we got there, we received $2.7 million for American Rescue Funds, and then, like I said, the rest of it will come in onto the, the Water Fund. V3 will be performing the construction inspection on a full-time basis. I've reviewed their scope, and it's good to go. So we will have somebody out there at all times to make sure everything's being done according to plans and specifications. I will also be out there. Their proposal also has some public notification requirements in there. If needed, we'll kind of discuss these as we go, but the plan is to probably have some type of a, open up a meeting with the residents, maybe right there at the school, you know, early on in the project, to kind of inform everybody, and then obviously do weekly updates. So that's in their budget for that work. And then GeoCon's just to do the testing of the soil and the subbases and things like that. So, let's see.
I don't believe I've ever seen Shallow Construction Company on a bid. Where are they from?
They're up north. I've worked with them twice. Never, didn't have any major issues with them. So they, they dip down, they come down to the south quite often. But mainly, they're from up north.
Okay. So moved.
I would recommend all three be taken separately, because these are separate kinds.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So unless anybody has any questions, we can move on to the...
When would this project start?
Project will start in sometime in, in the summer, and continue to the rest of the year, so.
All right, I would, I would ask for a motion to award the contract to Shallow Construction Company for the Cheney Avenue and Center Street Water Main roadway and roadway rehabilitation project in the amount of $3,183,273.20.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I would ask for a motion to approve construction engineering contract with V3 Companies in the amount of $189,053.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alder Person Overland. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the last one would be to approve construction testing services with GeoCon Professional Services in the amount of $6,293.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher, for the approval of the construction testing service with GeoCon Professional Services. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would say with this, with these three votes tonight, from Rayner to Hickory, all streets have been rehabilitated with water main and full reconstruction of roads, except for Oakland Avenue, of the north-south streets in that area. And we've been trying to pick off some of the east-west streets, as we do some of these north-south also. So that is quite an accomplishment, a lot of road work, a lot of water main replacement, takes care of water loss and everything else, so.
And Cheney was the worst rated road that we had in the city, so.
Good.
That'll be brought out, brought up to standard, too.
And a lot of water main breaks on Center, in the 18 and 1900 blocks also, so, okay.
All right. The next item I have, Mayor, is to execute a professional service agreement with Christopher Burke to perform the design engineering services for the Theodore Street and Gaylord and Cedarwood eastbound left-turn signal addition for an amount of $29,500. This was discussed at the workshop in January 23rd. Do you have any other questions? That's all I have.
So moved, just presented, and thank goodness it's finally happening. Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Gazal, for the execution of a professional service agreement with Christopher Burke to perform design engineering services for the Theodore Street and Gaylord and Cedarwood eastbound left-turn signal addition for an amount of $29,500. Questions or comments?
Well, Ryan, I just want to say, I, I have several predecessors about this, and was told it couldn't be done, so thank you. Thank you for... Thank you for getting it done.
No problem. Not sure what the hangup was, but.
I don't either, but thank you.
Roll call.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
I just want to remind you of if it's possible to use construction on Ward One, like, remember we discussed something about, we need to start updating social media or the website, where we at, where, just this way the resident will be asking the questions.
Correct.
A lot of municipalities, they do that, where they post where they're at with the construction, and this way to continue.
I can do that, as our previous conversations that we had about the roadways and kind of the direction that we're going to try to move in. I'm going to post what we're planning on doing this year, and I'm going to say what we're designing for next year, availability of funding. At some point, once we get a funding program kind of put together, I'll make that a three-year plan. At this point, I'm just not sure what the third year is yet because I don't know the money's available. So, but yeah, I will get something out on the website for this coming year, along with what's going to potentially happen in the following year.
Thank you.
Ron, I had a suggestion or a question for you. I've been having some questions posed to me about what residents can do when they see a street light that is not functioning. Is there any way we could possibly put something on our website or the Facebook page directing residents of how to proceed with that?
It is, Alderman, it's already on the website.
Okay.
If you go to the Public Works page and you go, there's a spot for report, there's a spot for streetlights.
Okay.
It'll take you directly to the comment website.
Yeah.
And you can go.
The map.
On the map.
Yeah.
And pick the light that's out.
Is it on our social media pages, though? Because I'm seeing a lot of questions and hearing a lot of questions. People may not go to the website as much as having that on social media.
I can do a post and pin it up for a while.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yep, I can do a post, pin it up, get it up there, and then just direct people to the website.
Thank you.
No problem.
Regarding into lights, the president, the Association for Bullef Falls, on the way here, she commented, I went to look at it. The entrance of Bullef Falls, the old lights that we used to have, they used to shine sporadically, and now these LED, they shine down. So the entrance, and they are red, pitch black, like you cannot see for Alder Lane to turn. Is there any way, they should request if we can load it, I don't know if we can do such a thing, but.
What's the, where's the location again?
Right here, nap, and the entrance of Bulle.
Oh, right here?
Of the little circle, yes. And look at it, and it is pitch black, and that's the whole idea why they have those lights by the entrances. You don't see, she's right, like totally, I guess she got a couple complaints from residents because they can't see in the Alder Lane.
Yeah, I'll take a look, verify whose lighting it is, and I'll try to take a look at it on the way out today.
Yeah, that would be nice, thank you.
Yeah.
It just happened today.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Community development, we have nothing. Police Department, our police chief, Ed Clark.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I have two items this evening on the agenda. My first item is requesting permission to purchase thirteen, I'm going to say this slowly, automated external defibrillator. There you go. For our squad cars. This is through our safety grant, it'll be reimbursed through the grant every year we get that money set aside for safety equipment. And actually, it was Mr. Moreno who came to us and said, hey, why don't we use that money for this, this purpose? And I think it was a good idea, so just another thing that the, another piece of equipment that the officer can have out there to help possibly save a life. I'd be looking to, for permission to go ahead and purchase those.
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alder Man Gazal, to approve the purchasing of thirteen automated external defibrillators for the squad cars. Questions or comments?
I have a question. So you're getting thirteen. How will they be distributed? I mean, will they be passed from shift to shift? Will they stay in vehicles? How does that work?
They would stay in vehicles, they'd be charged periodically, but yeah, we would be taking them in and out just to make sure they're guarded in inclement weather, to make sure they're not sitting in there for prolonged periods of time. We'll probably try to look next budget year to purchase a few more.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item I have on the agenda is looking for permission to purchase, to purchase police officers, to go ahead and hire two additional police officers from our civil service list. We just recently completed our service, civil service list, and it was certified. It was budgeted this year, and I'm just looking for permission to go ahead and purchase that. Let me say it again. Hire them, excuse me, and they would be ready for the academy in May, so it gives us a little time to get through our process with those candidates and vet them for hire.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alder Person Oberlin, for the hiring of two additional police officers from the civil service list for the City of Crest Hill Police Department. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item I have on the agenda is looking for permission to purchase, to purchase police officers, to go ahead and hire two additional police officers from our civil service list. We just recently completed our service, civil service list, and it was certified. It was budgeted this year, and I'm just looking for permission to go ahead and purchase that. Let me say it again. Hire them, excuse me, and they would be ready for the academy in May, so it gives us a little time to get through our process with those candidates and vet them for hire.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alder Person Oberlin, for the hiring of two additional police officers from the civil service list for the City of Crest Hill Police Department. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would entertain any questions.
I realized today that also the false alarm nineteen-twelve ordinance is not on the agenda.
Yes.
Are we going to?
Yes, we're going to get that. I know that we have to draft the ordinance yet, so.
Also, we're waiting on that.
Attorney Stiff is looking at it.
No, it's drafted. I just, I've got a couple of questions, so I requested a meeting with Ed and Jim to discuss my questions and potential concerns to this, since I wasn't at the last meeting.
We had the other mic.
You did.
He smiled a lot, just so you know.
I need to smile more, is what you're saying.
All right, I would just like to add, for the hiring of the two additional police officers, public safety is so important today, so I'd like to thank city council for their support in that. I know that in two thousand nine, we had twenty-four sworn police officers, and now we're, we'll be up to thirty-four sworn police officers in the City of Crest Hill. I think we've come a long way. It's very important to have that many police officers, and actually, I believe our number, we're supposed to be at a thirty-two, if I'm not mistaken, chief, and now we'll be at thirty-four, so that's even better for the City of Crest Hill.
I'll ask the assessment, yeah.
So, thank you.
But we don't have all these police working right now, right?
Not all the time.
Well, not all the time. That's why it's important to have extras.
Throughout the year, yeah.
So.
But we have some people on temporary leave or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're always going to have people that are out, either ill, sick, you know, whatever is going on. It's not, it's not abnormal throughout the year.
We have two currently.
We have two currently. We actually have three. We have one that is serving our country right now, so in active duty.
So we can use more.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. You had before you requested, we spoke about last Monday night also, for Crest Hill Pony Baseball, for the purchase of a full-page ad for their roster and schedule for the two thousand twenty-three baseball season for a cost of sixty-five dollars. Motion would be in order. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Sapiti, seconded by Alderman Verche, for the purchase of the ad for the Crest Hill Pony Baseball. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the agenda items under the mayor, just a couple of comments. The meeting for two weeks from today actually is a federal holiday. It is President's Day, so City Hall will be closed, so just for everybody's calendar, the next city council meeting will be on Tuesday night, February twenty-first, at seven P M. here in these council chambers. And also, we, I will be announcing at that meeting, a meeting with the Veterans and Police Memorial Committee to gather together probably somewhere in the last week of February, first week of March, for a meeting to discuss our two thousand twenty-three Memorial Day program, which will be held at New City Hall this year. That's it for the, for the mayor's report. I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody may have.
Hi, dear mayor. AB Gustos will be celebrating their forty-fifth anniversary, and it's a big milestone for them. And Brian Richa, to me, it would be nice if we can do something as a population or just to support the business. It would be good advertising, and today's world is really, as we know, it's really hard to, hold on a second. It's really hard to survive with businesses, so can we do something to honor the businesses that been here for so long?
Would you like to be in charge of that?
Oh, I don't have a secretary, and you have a secretary. What do you want me to, I mean, I can gather some information. Why are you laughing? What's funny? I mean, and where's that?
Brian's, Brian has not been there for forty-five years. The building, the building is good.
The business has been there for forty-five years.
Correct.
So we can agree or disagree on that. It is forty-five years of business.
I'll take care of it. I will put together a proclamation or a resolution, whatever will work, I'll reach out to Brian.
Just something, yes. I appreciate that. I'm not done. Also, it was, I realized there's a new smoke shop, a vapor shop, opening on twenty-four-hundred Plainfield Road.
I am not aware of that.
Okay, so that will make, I think, five or six in the city. Is there a way we can put an amount on that, just like the way we did with the bistro? I am concerned how the city is looking between the bistros and the smoke shops and at one point when it's too many, means it's like we're going to turn our city into just these smoke shops, and just it's not a good look in the long term. Is there counsel, or you guys like feel should put a limit on it? It's something that maybe you can discuss for future.
Would you like to discuss that in a future work session?
Well, I want to know if it's okay to put it on a work session. I mean, I know we have a lot on the agenda right now, but if it's for future work session, it would be something nice to discuss and.
We can have it on a future work session if you'd like to cap the number of smoke and vape shops we have in the city.
Would you like me to look into?
I'm sorry?
Would you like me to look into?
Oh, you have, going to be proactive? I love that.
To the ability to do that for the next work session?
Not next week. I mean, we have a lot in it.
Okay, so.
We'll give you a little time.
Do you think we may not be able to cap that business?
I'll have to look into whether, I mean, are you going to do it by zoning? Are you going to do it by just business licenses? I've got to think about it, so.
Okay.
I'm talking about the separate buildings. I'm not talking about like a liquor store or whatever. They usually sell not tobacco, not just, I'm talking about the single vibe, whatever.
Like a freestanding building?
Freestanding buildings. We have like five of them, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, they all have to be freestanding now, Mike, the smoke and vape shops, because of the ventilation system. They were usually in strip malls, and I think the last one we had was on Runway Road where Betsy's went in. So they.
The Hook Lounge.
Yeah, the Hook Lounge was there. So now they have to be in a freestanding building. I mean, a cigar lounge, I'm not sure. I don't know.
Yeah, my understanding, it's places you can purchase and smoke there. I mean, that's my understanding.
I would think there would need to be a lot of work done to that building, to the parking lot.
I don't smoke, so I couldn't tell you what one would even have or have been in there.
Okay, is that it?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wonder if we're gonna be drafting a resolution to honor Lori, who worked in the clerk's office for all her years of working here?
Well, I would believe that would have to come from the clerk's office on that one.
Are we, Chris?
We will.
Okay, thank you.
I will tell you that Marichkas is celebrating their eightieth anniversary in the same family, two thousand and twenty-three also, because they started in nineteen ninety-three, or nineteen thirty-three they started. So we'll take a baby, I'll take care of baby Gustos first, and then I'll move on to Marichkas for eighty years.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to City Clerk's report. Our City Clerk, Christine Rocher-Haw.
Thank you, and I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions, City Clerk? Okay, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our City Treasurer's report. Glenn Hockland, good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item we have before you is discussed at the last work session is I seek a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the budget system and adding a new chapter, three point zero one, section three point zero one, point zero one zero, budget system adopted to Title III, Revenue and Finance of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. And prior to, to requesting that motion, I guess I'd ask Lisa to give us a little bit of, for the public, a little bit of overview on what that involves.
Sure, so as discussed at the January twenty-third work session, this would be changing the way the city actually budgets. So it's gonna be going from an appropriation system, which means that we are gonna be held to individual expense line items to an overall department budget, which will lend some flexibility as far as, you know, if something comes up that wasn't expected, if salaries have to be moved to purchase services because a position hasn't been filled. There's more flexibility in the budget system, but it also allows for the city to actually, if they wanted to enhance the capital equipment program, to set money aside every year in order to purchase things. And also, it allows for a contingency program, too. So if the money has, or the city has extra money that needs to be set aside, under this system, it's able to set a contingency under this budget system and under the appropriation system. It wasn't allowed to do that. So it gives us more flexibility, but it's not gonna remove the transparency. So if we are making changes to the budget, we still will bring that so you know that if we are switching between line items, you guys will at least have an opportunity to discuss it, and so we can bring it to your attention.
The main difference that I perceive, as you explained it, is that we're doing basically the same thing, but eliminating the coming to ask for moving it, part of it, so they can do things in a swifter, quicker. They're still gonna be telling us what they did, but they don't have to come ask for the permission to have it.
Correct, and then legally, we don't also have to amend the ordinance, which we did under the on.
Correct, but it'll still all be there for us. Nothing will be hidden from us.
Correct, yes, no, we will be bringing to you every time we're switching line items.
So moved as presented. Second.
We have motion by Elder Person Overland, seconded by Alder Woman Gazal to approve an ordinance adopting the budget system and adding a new chapter, three point zero one, section three point zero one, point zero one zero, the budget system adopted to Title III, Revenue and Finance of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rocher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance one nine four two.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Next item is to, I seek your approval on an ordinance creating the office and position of Crest Hill Budget Officer by adding a new chapter, two point two five, Budget Officer, and sections two point two five, point zero one zero, creation of office, semi-colon appointment, two point two five, point zero two zero, salary, and two point two five, point zero three zero, duties and responsibilities to the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. As discussed, this would not involve any salary. It would be, it would be an additional duty imposed upon our Director of Finance, Lisa Danavet, which she's willing to agree to that responsibility without, without any adjustment in salary.
And it's my understanding that per the ordinance once passed, the mayor will make that appointment of Lisa to agree to set that. And the ordinance has built in that if in some future situation there is not a finance director who is serving as the budget officer in some future date, the salary would be set by the council at your discretion.
So moved.
Second.
And motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alder Person Overland to approve an ordinance creating the office and position of Crest Hill Budget Officer by adding a new chapter, two point two two five, Budget Officer, and sections two point two five, point zero one zero, creation of office, the appointment, two point two five, point zero two zero, salary, and two point two five, point thirty, duties and responsibilities to the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rocher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance one nine four three.
I thank you for that. We'll request that that be on the next regular session as an agenda item and ask Mayor Solomon to request Lisa to fill that duty. And a question, are we gonna have that as an individual, or are we gonna do that to the office? That'll be under Financial Director, correct, or Director of Finance?
You're appointing the position, not the individual. Is that what you're asking?
Well, we'll be.
As the budget officer.
You'll be appointing the position to the finance director's position.
Okay, wanted to make sure that was clear with everyone. Next thing I have is I seek your approval on our list of bills through February seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Our total in that timeframe was five hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills from February seventh or through February seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rocher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I have three other items, though these don't require any action. These are just reports. Our regular overtime payroll from January second, two thousand twenty-three, through January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, was in the amount of two hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and forty-five cents. Regular overtime from January sixteenth through twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-three was in the amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand, fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. We had a quarterly compensation buyback through the twenty-seventh of January in two thousand twenty-three in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. At this point, I'd like to thank Jim and Lisa for promoting the ordinance. This is gonna be a better way for us to do business, for department heads to do business. Will not change any transparency in regard to what we're having here. It also gives us an opportunity to take over some unspent, lack of better term, surplus to carry that forward in the next year. So if we have a line item that's still open, we're able to carry that through without, without too much trouble. So I want to thank you all for that, for that ordinance, and that's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Questions of City Treasurer?
Glenn, I want to thank you as well for bringing that to us. Lisa, for all your work as well. Jim, whoever participated, thank you for that.
Thank you all, good night.
Okay, thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business, we have nothing. Anybody? New business, anyone?
I do. I need a motion to go into executive session next Monday, February thirteenth, in regard personnel. I also in that motion would like to include that all department heads be present at that meeting. So if you need me to send something directly, I'll be unhappy that. So is that a right way to do it, Mr. Attorney?
Well, it's not a motion. It's just to place that item on the agenda.
Okay, so we don't need, according to IML book, is that we need to make a motion to, to, for a council to request to go a meeting?
To place it on the agenda.
Only to place on agenda, not to make a motion? Okay.
And then, obviously, once it's on the agenda, then there will be a motion to go into the executive session, like we usually do.
So that will be when? Today?
No, the, we need a motion and a vote to place this item on the agenda for the thirteenth.
Correct, that's what I meant, okay. So I make a motion. Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Woman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Rocher, place on the agenda and executive session for next Monday, I have for personnel, February.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
With department heads.
With departments, department heads present.
Correct.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Epstein.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rocher?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, Committee Liaison Reports, anyone?
Yes, seeking approval with Shaw Media for ads in their Heritage Corridor publications. In the past, we've gone with two other publications, and it's shown here. Everyone's got a thing for eight hundred fifty dollars. But at the last work session, we talked about this, and they have three publications, and there's a little bit of a savings, only costs two hundred dollars more. And we had talked, and everyone was in agreement to go with the three publications for a cost of a thousand fifty dollars. So I'm seeking approval to do that.
So moved.
Does he second it?
Yeah, we have motion by Alder Woman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Rocher for an ad in the two thousand twenty-three Heritage Corridor Travel Guide in the amount of eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
No, I was seeking for.
Thousand fifty.
A thousand fifty?
Thousand fifty for all three of their publications. It would be the I and M, Canal Towns, the Route sixty-six, and the Starved Rock area. Your three publications that they have.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rocher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, anybody else under Committee or Liaison Reports? City Council comments, positive City Council comments? Begin with Alder Person Overland this evening.
I want to wish my co-pilot here a very happy birthday. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mark.
Alderman Sepiti?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Well, it may seem early, but I make an announcement for the annual Crest Hill Lions Club Easter egg hunt. It'll be held on Saturday, April eighth, at Chaney Park, right near the pool. Starts promptly at noon. It's open to ages zero through ten. So April eighth at noon. Thanks, Mayor.
Alderman Kubal?
Nothing additional, Mayor.
Alderman Dyke?
Just want to wish everyone a happy Saint Valentine's Day. Don't forget your significant other.
Alderman Rocher?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Jefferson?
Ah, yes, I'd like to thank Jim and Chris for their assistance and allowing me to be able to attend these meetings visually because I'm unable to be there because of the surgery I've had. And I'd like to thank all of the residents of Warratt too that have given me their well wishes, and hey, we're gonna continue to move forward. Thank you.
You forgot Claudia on holding the camera.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't count.
Right, and for my, 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 Claudia for holding the camera all day and then last week with her phone.
You're welcome. I'm driving you next week here, so just so you know. Okay. Oh, I want to congratulate the Richmond Volleyball Girls on winning the Invitational Championship this last Saturday. I am so proud of each one of them, but I am proud of player number one, which is my daughter. I'm not saying she's number one, but her T-shirt does say number one, but she is number one to me. And as a captain, I'm so proud of her. She have directed this group like a gogur. I'm like, so congratulations to all, and I'm hoping they will go to the regionals next.
Oh, and then they could come in here.
Well, I don't know about that, but we'll see. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, public comment. Anybody like to address City Council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. We took care of the executive session. Is there any other needs for an executive session, Mike?
No. Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Sure.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Rocher. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rocher?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at eight forty-four PM. Thank you, and good evening.